Great. Okay, welcome everyone to our planning board meeting Tuesday, June 4th. I would like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any declarations of conflicts today? Seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda? Moved by Chris Fournier, okay, seconded by Rosemary, all those in favor. Wonderful, thank you. An adoption of the minutes from our last meeting of May 7th. Moved by Bobby, seconded by Counselor Beck, all those in favor. Great, thank you. Any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, we can move right on to our reports. And our first report is zoning and development bylaw housekeeping amendments. If you recall, these had already been to a public consultation, so they're back today with staff's recommendation, and turn that over to you, Deegan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On February 13, the Planning and Heritage Department recommended to the planning board the approval of housekeeping bylaw amendments. These bylaw amendments are aimed to enhancing the precision and efficiency of the city's regulation. Our recommendations include changes to table, the sequence of information, alphabetical ordering, new additions of amendments, and revisions to existing definitions in specified sections and depicted on screen. To inform the residents of Charlestown about these proposed amendments and to invite their feedback, a notice was published under Section 3.10 of zoning and development bylaw in The Guardian on May 4th and May 11th, 2024. Despite this outrage, the Planning and Heritage Department did not receive any comments or objections regarding the proposed changes. Following this, a public meeting was held on May 15, 2024, to discuss the housekeeping bylaw amendments, where no objections were raised from the residents. These amendments are designed to improve the clarity and effectiveness of the city's regulations. I appreciate your attention to these proposed changes, and we recommend that the suggested housekeeping amendments to zoning and development bylaws be recommended to council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Deegan. Does anyone have any questions? They're just housekeeping definitions, amendments. If nobody has any questions, then staff is recommending that we accept these housekeeping amendments and move it on to council. So moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Chris Fournier. So all those in favor of moving these amendments on to council. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a 38 McLeod Crescent, PID 636035. It is a request for a major variance, and I'll turn that over to you, Michael.
Thank you. So as was mentioned, this is for a major variance for rear yard setback at 38 McLeod Crescent. 38 McLeod Crescent is a large parcel being used as a warehouse with a storage yard. The existing warehouse building is built to a non-conforming 2.16 meter setback from the northern rear property line. The location is within the M2 heavy industrial zone, and surrounding zones include M2 and M3 business park industrial. All surrounding properties are zoned as industrial. Nearby structures include large industrial buildings with some used for commercial uses. Our request today is to reduce the required minimum rear yard setback from 7.5 meters, 24.6 feet, to approximately 2.16 meters, 7.1 feet, to allow the construction of an addition that's 297 square meters to an existing industrial building on the subject property. These are the plans, there's a clear photo next. The proposed development is in addition to an existing building. The existing building maintains a 1.6 meter setback to the northern property line, whereas the requirement is 7.5 meters. So here in the larger photo of the development, you can see that the red lines are the property line. The blue line is the setbacks as required in the bylaw, and the gray area that's highlighted is the addition to the building with the existing building just to the right of that. So regarding the official plan, our goal is to create new land use categories which reflect the types of industrial development that are appropriate for Charlestown, to designate tracts of land for them, and to work with the public and private sector partners to stimulate this type of growth. And that gets drilled down in three sections. Our objective is to create new industrial land use categories that reflect the evolutionary changes to the sector of the economy. This includes specific guidance around heavy industrial parcels. Our policy shall be to establish heavy industrial zone, which is intended for industries that may cause land use conflicts, or best located adjacent to the city's arterial roads. This class would include bulk storage, or environmentally sensitive or dangerous goods. So speaking to that, this development is looking at a storage yard, so it kind of fits within that heavy industrial use. Our objective is to ensure that industrial zones do not detract from Charlestown's character and appeal. Our policy shall be to minimize land use conflicts which might exist or arise between existing industrial zones and their non-industrial neighbors. So again, this one is entirely surrounded by industrial development, and also it should be noted that this use is existing on site. This would be an expansion of the enclosed space. There is exterior space that's currently being used that will take up. And our objective is to position Charlestown to compete with other industrial locations in the Maritimes. Our policy shall be to partner with others to acquire and service land for development for a new generation of industrial parks and industrial parks that have services and facilities that are state of the art. This development is occurring within a development that has expanded over the last number of years, and this is part of that extension of development. So in accordance with Section 3.9 of the zoning and development bylaw, a notice was sent regarding the application was sent on Friday, 17th, to property owners within 100 meters of the subject property, listing their written comments, and none were received. Regarding the analysis of the proposal, the parcel is located within heavy industrial, which is the most appropriate zone for the use. The proposed addition is designed to be in keeping with the established setback of the existing building, and the development plans to enclose outdoor space currently being used for outdoor storage uses. Kind of neutrally, it will require further permitting in terms of a building and development permit, and the shortcomings are that it is not in alignment with the current bylaw. The rear yard setback does require a variance. Staffer of the opinion that the variance request for reduced rear yard setback of approximately 2.16 meters, 7.1 feet, is reasonable given the negligible impacts that this reduced setback would have on the abutting industrial property to the north, and that it would still provide sufficient physical space for circulation around the building concerning future care and maintenance of the structure within the boundaries of the subject property. The recommendation is, Planning and Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council the following variance for subject property located at 38 McLeod Crescent, PID 636035, be approved, to reduce the required rear yard setback from 7.5 meters, 24.6 feet, to approximately 2.16 meters, 7.1 feet, to allow for the construction of an addition that is 297 square meters to an existing industrial building on the subject property.
Great, thank you for that, Michael. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
I did.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Beck.
So I was trying to look at the, I was looking at the map, and I couldn't get a real good visual on the property, so I ended up to look at it, and there's, the 38 is the WM&amp;M office building, right? And then behind it, there's a parking lot, and then behind that, running east-west, there's a green fence.
So I'll just go quickly to the site plan. So this development is occurring
Yeah, if you could highlight.
In the rear part here. So this parcel has been kind of unofficially used for two different building uses, even though it's one parcel. So if you see the parcel shape here that's outlined in red, that's the PID where construction is occurring.
Yeah.
This parcel is used for both, or this parcel and the parcel next to it that's just south of the purple. If you can kind of see just the, it's at the bend.
Can you highlight that, Brandon, or Michael, what you're talking about, sorry?
Oh, sorry. There we go. So that one right there. It's a little finicky here. So yeah, just south of this purple parcel where the cursor is, that gray parcel is also used, sorry, just gonna go back, is used for that outdoor storage space. The building with the grass that you can see on the road is not the subject building that's being extended, it's the rear one to the back with the gray roof.
Okay.
So they, even though that's one parcel, they use it for two separate parts of their use.
Okay.
So it's the rear building that's being extended.
Okay, that makes sense, and okay, that helps. Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you for that clarification, Michael. Any other questions? If not, as Michael suggested, the planning staff is encouraging planning board to recommend to council that the following major variance for the subject property at 38 McLeod Crescent be approved. Do I have, oh, are you going to move that? Do you have a question?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
So how about we get the motion on the floor? Okay, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Beck. Okay, so now we're on the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Michael, the property in question, the building already has a variance approved for the existing one, right? Which is?
It's non-conforming, so a variance does not need to be, because it hasn't been altered.
Okay.
It does not need a variance.
Okay, and does it have any conflict with the journeying land, which is also M2, right?
So around that property, it's mostly used for outdoor storage. So on that side of the, so on the northern property line, the surrounding uses are not buildings, they're outdoor storage space.
Right.
There is still a gap, so there's that 2.16 gap between the property line and both the existing building and the addition.
Okay.
So what kind of our analysis was that there's sufficient space to maintain the existing and addition building, and there isn't really like a structure neighboring it. So the structure for the surrounding parcel is closer to another road, I think it's off of Mount Edward Road, is closer to that side over there, and that the area directly adjacent to the rear is essentially open space. They have, it wouldn't be considered developed land.
Right, but any concerns were raised by the owner of the PID adjacent to the rear?
We got no responses back.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about what the use of the space will be.
So the space indicated was storage yard, which is an extension of the use. Warehousing is presumed to be the primary use of the physical structure, the space, though that was based off of the existing use because it's an extension of the use. So warehousing for the structure and outdoor storage for any surrounding land.
So just to clarify, Michael, do we know what's going to be stored in the space?
No, we do not.
And are there any safety concerns around what's going to be stored there?
No, with the most appropriate use being M2, this is heavy industrial land. So if an extension of that use was to occur, it would be presumed to be suitable under the M2 zone, right? An expansion of the use under the use. We didn't see any use conflicts or concerns about the use.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions? So we have the resolution on the floor to move on to council. So all those in favor, staff's recommendation. Any opposed? Great, all right, so we'll move that along to council. Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is a report for a lot consolidation, application from the PEI Housing Corporation, 33 Waymouth Street. And, okay, over to you to give this report. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and respected members of the board. This is a request to approve the lot consolidation for the unaddressed parcels, PID 337444 and 337451 adjacent to 2123 Waymouth Street, subjects to a new perimeter deed description being registered describing the outer boundaries of the consolidated parcels and design review approval for any new construction on the new consolidated lot resulting from the merger of parcels identified as PID 337444 and 337451. The purpose of the lot consolidation is to provide a new land assembly that will facilitate the future construction of a three-story residential apartment building on the new lot. The subject properties are currently vacant and do not contain any buildings or structures. The surrounding neighborhood contains a mix of residential and commercial buildings located in the downtown neighborhood zone, as well as the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone. The abuting properties include the Smith Lodge supportive housing complex, being a multi-story apartment building, is located at 35 Waymouth Street, also owned by the applicant, PEI Housing Corporation, and a privately owned apartment building at 21 Waymouth Street. A convenience store is located in the close proximity to the subject property found at 19 Hillsborough Street. This is the site survey map. This is the concept site development plan of the proposed three-story residential building, concept ground floor plan, concept typical floor plan, and front elevation. In accordance with Section 48.3.5 of the zoning and development bylaw, written notice by ordinary mail explaining the purpose of the lot consolidation was sent to 55 property owners within 100 meters of the subject property soliciting their written comments for or against the proposal on May 17, 2024. The deadline to submit written comments concerning the application was 12:00 PM on Thursday, May 30. One letter of concern and one letter of opposition have been received. As of the submission deadline of May 30, an abuting resident and property owner to the west expressed concerns for privacy, access, noise, and security, and requested the property to be managed effectively to avoid causing major disruptions for other people living in the neighborhood. A local developer expressed generally opposition to the consolidation on the basis that the province, as applicant, is being afforded preferential treatment concerning the application. Here is the quick summary of the attributes. Some of the positive attributes are that the consolidation would better enable the facilitation of compact urban form and infill development at a downtown location. 13-unit supportive housing along with supporting service will provide additional local employment and economic opportunities. The property is in proximity to many complementary and supporting businesses, services, and amenities. Affordable medium-density housing to meet future needs. Some neutral attributes are that design review is required to ensure the proposed development is harmonious with its surrounding. Also, design review is required to ensure that the proposed development is designed according to the design standards for the 500-lot area. The shortcoming is that the proposed development could impact the existing privacy that residents of abuting land users have become accustomed to over time owing to the presence of an empty lot immediately beside them. The Planning and Heritage Department encourages that planning board recommend to council that the lot consolidation application be approved subject to a new perimeter deed description being registered describing the outer boundaries of the consolidated parcels, and that the proposed development receive approval from the design review board for any new construction. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Sonia. Before I open it up to questions, I noticed one of the letters outlines that they're questioning whether or not the same process has been followed for this applicant versus private developers. Can you just confirm on the record that this, that you've followed the exact same process that you would, whether this was a private developer or if it was PEI Housing Corporation?
Yes, the same process has been.
Same process has been followed.
Followed, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions?
I have a question. Oh, you can move it if you want, yeah.
Okay, so it's moved by Sin and seconded by Bobby, that we accept staff's recommendation for this lot consolidation. So the resolution is on the floor, and I believe Counselor Beck has a question.
Yeah, so the other letter cited potential parking concerns, and Sonia, if you could go to page 49, sorry. Yeah, that one there, yep, yeah. So it has a 13-unit, three-story, one unit on the bottom, and then six on each of the second and third floors. If I'm looking at this, there is no parking provision anywhere. Am I correct?
Yes, this is basically concept stage, and we haven't received the detailed access and parking area plan yet. That will be asked during the design review process.
Okay.
So this is an application for only lot consolidation, but the final design we will receive during the process of design.
Okay, so my questions would be more at the later, at the later stage. Okay, good, thank you.
So the only thing we're being asked for right now is to consolidate these two lots for a potential future three-story housing complex. So the other details will come along when and if they make a formal application. So it would go through design review, it would go through if there were any variances required, parking restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. But today, it's just about lot consolidation, so. All right, any other questions? If not, all those in favor of lot consolidation. Anybody opposed? Okay, great, thank you, Sonia. All right, last item on the agenda today is our manager, David, will present to us, and this is one we've already seen. It's gone to public consultation, 126 Rochford Street. It's a request to allow council the opportunity to determine the disposition of an application and allow the applicant the ability to withdraw the application following a public meeting. Over to you, David.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, just to repeat what was just said, this is a request to withdraw an existing site-specific exemption request from zoning and allow council opportunity to determine disposition of the application. The application concerns subject property, municipally addressed as 126 Rochford Street, PID number 345744. As members of the board may recall, this was before planning board, earlier this year, and subsequently the applicant has requested a withdrawal of the application. The following slide shows the location of the subject property, which is located on the east side of Rochford Street, north of the intersection with Fitzroy Street. The existing site-specific exemption Uh, the existing site-specific exemption request intended to facilitate the conversion of the existing single detached dwelling on the subject property, uh, to permit a office use, be in a law office as a principal use on the subject property. Uh, the zoning bylaw otherwise only allows an office use as an accessory home occupation to a principal, uh, residence in this case. And just to run through the background as to how we got here, uh, requests for public consultation were made to the planning board and to council on April 2nd and April 9th of this year respectively, where the application was approved to proceed to public consultation. Uh, mailed notice was sent to property owners within 100 meters of the subject property on May 1st, 2024. A public meeting was subsequently held on May 15th with council and members of the public in attendance to consider and provide feedback on the proposal. Uh, nine written responses were received, with eight in opposition, one in support, and at the public meeting, there were six residents who spoke, uh, all in opposition to the application. Uh, no recommendation has yet been provided to the planning board or council, as the applicants wished, wished to withdraw the application, uh, in response and recognition of the feedback that has been received, uh, to date. Uh, the zoning and development bylaw, uh, under section 3.10.3, uh, requires that, um, where an application has gone to a public meeting with council already, uh, that a withdrawal request has to be, uh, the disposition regarding a withdrawal request has to be considered by council, uh, whether to grant the request for the applicant to withdraw. And to emphasize again, the applicants wished, wished to withdraw the, uh, site-specific exemption request in response and recognition of the public feedback that has been received to date, which was, uh, on the whole, uh, majority, uh, negative in this case. Um, so again, a healthy majority of the public feedback received concerning the request expressed strong opposition to the proposal, and it is principally for that reason that the applicant made the request to withdraw their application and seek other, uh, options or opportunities for their venture. Uh, on this basis, planning staff therefore encourage that planning board recommend to council that the request to withdraw the act of site-specific exemption application, uh, concerning 126 Rochford Street, PID number 345744, uh, be granted. And so therefore, our recommendation is, planning and heritage department encourages planning board, uh, to recommend to council that with respect to section 3.10.3 of the zoning and development bylaw, uh, that the applicant, Jeff Gibson, GG Law, Inc., uh, be permitted to withdraw their application, site-specific exemption request that concerns property located at 126 Rochford Street, PID number 345744, for which a public meeting was previously held on May 15th, 2024. Uh, so that is a summary of, um, the request and, uh, our recommendation, and I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if anyone else is curious of this, but what, what would happen if, if council did not accept staff's recommendation? I mean, if, if somebody wants to, 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 you know, no longer proceed with their application, is it because they're getting their money back? Is that why it has to go through for council, or just out of curiosity?
Yeah, through the chair, it's a very good question. Um, this isn't a case where the city would refund anything to the applicant. Uh, the applicant could, you know, they have the freedom to make that request if they so desire, but this wouldn't trigger any refund of funds, given how far along we are in the process. We don't have any mechanism we can lean on to do that. Um, this is really a technical matter whereby the bylaw, as it's currently written under section 3.10.3, says that where an application's already gone to public consultation, if a withdrawal request is received, then council has to provide a decision on that. Uh, so we're, we're compelled to follow the bylaw here. We have, I know it might sound a bit onerous, but we're doing this because of how the bylaw is technically worded, and the fact a public meeting has already been held. So had the applicant chose to withdraw before the public meeting, we wouldn't be here today discussing this, so, yeah.
Thank you, that's probably something else to change on our futures zoning and development bylaw.
Uh, it's certainly under review.
Because it seems so rather odd that if council doesn't accept the recommendation, does this application just sit in limbo?
Uh, through the chair, that's a good question. Um, yeah, in essence, it would, um, and the applicant may have a right of appeal there to IRRAC if council were not to grant their request. So, um, again, we're doing this because of how the bylaw is worded, we're compelled to in this case. Uh, so we're just, um, following through with our obligations under the bylaw today.
Great, thank you. Sen, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. David, I just, I know you explained the process, you know, but just wanted to, why this particular section was there in the first place? You know, was there a rational, and I'm asking as a planner, like, from a planning perspective, what was the rationale for having, uh, you know, a withdrawal request be approved by the council?
Through the chair, Sen, that's a good question, and in all honesty, in my professional experience, I've never seen anything like this in a zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Anywhere that I've worked. Um, I, I, no judgment, but I, I, I have a feeling that the reason this is in the bylaw, this is just my hunch, is that because the public consultation has already occurred, the public has spent time and energy, came out to the meeting, they provided written feedback, that because of that element, that it, it should be up to council to decide, given all that time and energy that the public may have put in to provide feedback and response, that it should be up to council to judge whether the withdrawal should be honored or not because the public did expend some time and energy here. I think maybe that's the reason.
Yeah, thank you, that's a pretty good explanation, but I think, you know, when you allow the council to make that determination, you're really putting the applicant's right to, you know, withdrawal i- in question. Um, I would say this could have been just an item of information to the council, say that the applicant has withdrawn, and, and that can be notified in catchet, and that suffices the requirement. Maybe, yes, I, I agree with Madam Chair, we should, you know, probably take out this section from the bylaw when the review happens.
Uh, through the chair, I'll just follow up on that. The only other thing that comes to my mind is it gives the opportunity to council to formally close the file and say no, perhaps, like, just to kind of reinforce the request, m- maybe. Um, I'll, I won't say anymore.
Thank you, David. Yeah, we'll just add that to the drop-down window of all the other changes for zoning and development bylaw. Um, so we have a resolution on the floor. Staff's recommendation is to, um, recommend to council that we allow the applicant to withdraw their application. Um, do you have a question?
No, I was gonna, did it already get moved? I didn't.
I think it did, Sen moved it.
Okay.
Didn't, oh, no, you didn't.
I didn't think it did, yeah. So I was gonna move, except staff's recommendation.
Okay, moved by Counselor McCabe, and seconded by Sen. All right, so now the question's on the floor. Any questions to the resolution? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you, David, for that. Um, our agenda, unless there are any, is, if there's any new business anyone wants to add for a future meeting. Okay? If not, a motion to adjourn, moved by Chris, seconded by Rosemary. All those in favor? Good night, folks.